Before I sit down, Heidi has taken the seat below because we have a very special day here today. A sad day for all of us here in Middletown, a happy day because it is Karen Senna's birthday. Twenty-five again, right Karen?
Yes, exactly.
But Karen is going to be retiring at the end of this month. So Heidi has stepped aside to allow Karen to open up her final township committee meeting. So let's give a round of applause for Karen. All right Karen, back to work. Here we go. You ready to do it?
Ready to go?
All right.
Good evening. Thank you. This is the meeting of the Township Committee, October 20th, 2025. Notice requirements provided for in the Open Public Meetings Act have been satisfied. Notice of this meeting was properly given by transmission to the Asbury Park Press, the Two River Times, and by posting at the Middletown Township Municipal Building, and filing with the Township Clerk, all on January 11th, 2025. Committeeman Clark.
Here.
Committeewoman Kratz.
Here.
Committeeman Sedenbrino. Deputy Mayor Heibel.
Here.
Mayor Perry.
I'm here Karen.
Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'd like to ask for a moment of silence to honor the troops serving worldwide, defending our constitutions, freedoms, and way of life. Thank you. First item on tonight's agenda, we have a presentation recognizing Jason's Dreams for Kids for donations to Veterans Village. At this time, I would like to invite the representatives from the organization to join Mayor Perry at the front of the room.
All right, good evening everyone. An exciting day as last, or earlier this month, we recognized several organizations that have helped with our Veterans Village. And Committeeman Clark introduced me, Dennis, and more importantly, Jason's Dreams. Because of all the work that they do in our community. And it's organizations like Jason's Dreams that was born out of tragedy, but has made an impact that we know Jason would be extremely proud of. And Jason's Dreams, year after year, makes those little, little impacts. But to the people that they're benefiting, they're much greater than little. And Dennis has a way of saying that the impact, I've met with him several times now, and the impact that they have, you know, is small and is tiny. But I can tell you that the efforts that they make each and every day, each and every year, supporting our community, is certainly one that we should all celebrate, thank, and be grateful that they're right here in this town and in our county, and making an impact for our residents. So let's give it up for Jason's Dreams. A few months ago, I met Dennis and we were talking about his, what he saw as our Veterans Village began to take shape. And he said, "I want to be involved." And it's not one of those donations that you had to pry people and really make an effort for. Because just a few, maybe two weeks ago, Dennis and I met upstairs in my conference room and he said, "You know, I'm ready to assist in any way that we can." And normally, when conversations like this happen in that conference room in particular, the numbers start on opposite ends of the spectrum and we get, find ourselves in the middle. Not the conversation with Jason's Dreams. The donation that they wanted to make was started at $25,000. And when I heard that number, I almost fell out of my chair. By the time we left that meeting, we had gotten to $50,000. And Jason's Dreams, Dennis, and the entire team's wife are making an impact by donating $50,000 to the men and women who have honorably served our nation, to support our veterans, to make sure that they have the resources that they need. And Dennis, you and I have sat and hugged for a long time. And many people know, I'm not that big of a hugger. But we hugged for a long time at that moment. Because Dennis does not do it for himself. He doesn't do it for his family. He does it for a great, great cause. And that's helping our fellow residents, helping our community. And it is because of Jason that Dennis has been able to go on this endeavor. So Dennis, when we sat in that conference room, you pointed to your chest. And I'm going to ask you to say a few words about Jason in a minute. But I want you to know that you both are doing an amazing job. And the $50,000 will be divided up over the course of several years to the residents of our Veterans Project in the amount of $300 per quarter, so that they can go to Target, they can go to Lowe's, and get those small things that perhaps we take for granted, don't think about. But Dennis made it happen. Dennis made it happen. Jason and his dream made it happen. Let's give it up for Jason's Dreams.
There are people that I got to thank. Without people believing in me, I wouldn't be able to keep the promise I made 33 years ago to my nephew. I'll never forget the phone call on December the 12th, when he was in the hospital. He called, he called me Uncle Diddy. He said, "Uncle Diddy, you told me to call you when I found out what I wanted for Christmas." I said, "Oh, you're going to be home from the hospital?" He says, "I don't know, you're talking to my mom today." I said, "No, what's up?" He said, "My cancer's back." I said, "You got through it once, we'll get through it again." I said, "You riding wheelbarrow, Uncle Diddy, I'll push it for you." He says, "I knew you would, that's why I called you." I said, "All right, bub, what you want for Christmas?" He said, "I don't want to die." If I do, we may make a promise that you'll never forget. Anywhere near the age that he passed away, people like Brian Clark here, his father, they made it easy for me to keep a wish, a dream that I made for a little boy that wished. We'll send it right now, we can act. I feel that we made a difference. And it's kind of crazy, I think back to certain things, I don't want to call no names, certain people here tonight know who I am from many years ago. And we've grown a lot. And we're really united with Jason. I pledge to make a difference in a lot more people's lives because of him and because of people that believe in me. It's not about me. It's about the cause. And we can all find a way to make a difference if we just choose to make a difference. And I just want to thank people for, you know, what they're doing here and, you know, continuing to believe in me.
Well, we believe in you Dennis. Jason will be very proud. He is very proud, looking down on all the good that you've been able to do. And we couldn't be more grateful because the impact that you're making today and every day is one that's deeply rooted in not only the faith that one day you will be reunited with Jason, but that day he'll already know all the impacts that you've already made. So God bless you, my friend.
Thank you.
So in grateful appreciation of this unbelievable donation to Middletown Veterans and Veterans Village, this plaque is hereby presented to Jason's Dreams for Kids on this 20th day of October in the year 2025. God bless. Thanks.
All right. One, two, three. Beautiful.
All right, let's give it up for Jason's Dreams.
Next item on our agenda, we have a presentation recognizing the Middletown Elks Lodge 2179 for donations to Veterans Village. I'd like to invite the representatives from this organization to join Mayor Perry at the front of the room.
We'll take care of it, Dennis.
It's not going to get away that quickly.
So, so last time, John was up here with the Garrett Room and Bike Tour that was able to donate $7,600 to the Veterans Village and our veterans. Today, he backed up here in a different capacity, two, yeah, two meetings in a row. Don't say we never honor you, John. But today, I was over at the Veterans Village with our Veterans Affairs Committee as they went through the new building. And it's punchless items at this point. And it's looking more and more beautiful by the day. When I passed by the other day, last night, I saw it lit up for the first time. And when you see this beautiful building, you realize the lives that are about to be impacted by this endeavor. And the Middletown Elks Lodge 2179 came to me, John, Eddie Hahn, and came to me and said, "What can we do for the Veterans Village?" Well, on each floor is two community rooms. And those rooms will be fitted out with furniture so that our veterans can build a bond with one another. It's not just a building where they're going to walk in and walk out. It's where we hope that they will grow together as a community, as a family. And the Middletown Elks Lodge said, "Well, what can we do? What can we do for our veterans?" And without hesitation, I said, "Well, we have two community rooms on each floor. We could buy the TVs for those four rooms." But it didn't stop there because the Middletown Elks Lodge wasn't going to let it stop there. Not only did they buy two 65-inch TVs for two of the rooms, but then they bought two 85-inch TVs for the other community rooms. And then they went on and bought an additional 12 TVs for each room in the building. And this was done not for the purposes of recognition, it was done for the purposes of helping out a fellow veteran, people that have defended our country, both at home and abroad. And when these individuals walk into this building, they will be greeted by gifts of support, of love, and an ability for making them feel at home. And the Middletown Elks Lodge is certainly a massive part of making them feel at home. They may not want to watch the New York Football Giants, or the Jets for that matter, but I bet you all those Jets fans that will be in that building, they will say that next year, next year. So on behalf of the entire Township Committee, to all of our Elks here, we're damn proud to have you in town. Because it's those small acts that you make a difference in. I can still see the little girl from just a few years ago who couldn't walk. And the Middletown Elks went out, a woman went on Facebook and said, "My daughter can't walk, she needs support, she needs a walker." And without fanfare, without anything, saw it on Facebook, made it happen. That little girl is now walking just fine because of the Middletown Elks. And that is what community is all about. And that is the impact that all of you are making. So on behalf of the entire Township Committee, on behalf of all the veterans that are going to be living there, thank you for your efforts in making this possible. Let's give it up for our Elks.
My name is Bill Nicolai, passing as old ruler of Middletown Elks Lodge 2179. And also now leading, later going to do the job again next year. I'd like to first of all, thank the mayor and the rest of the committee for recognizing us like this. It's so much appreciated. We don't do it for the recognition. We do it for the good work. And if anybody knows our organization across the country, we'll never forget a veteran, we'll never forget a senior citizen, and our special children hold a special place in our hearts. So if you leave here with nothing else, just know that we're another avenue you can pursue. If there's somebody in need of anything, if you need some help, or you know a family that needs some help, contact us. We'll be there for you. Thanks very much.
By the way, all the four TVs are installed, they're ready to go.
Turn them on yet?
I didn't turn them on, but that's what I said somehow, I was up there.
All right, ready? One, two, three. Perfect. Thank you.
All right, let's give it up for Middletown Elks Lodge.
Next item on our agenda, we have a presentation recognizing October 2025 as Substance Use and Misuse Prevention Month in the Township of Middletown. Kimberly Kratz is up at the front of the room with Mayor Perry.
So I'm actually not going to say too much because Kim Kratz lives and breathes for making a difference in our community when it comes to substance and alcohol use. Even before she was a member of the Township Committee, she has long led our Middletown Alliance and does amazing work. I popped by just the other day and in there was Kim, all of our students learning about social media. I had to leave because I had my five-year-old with me and I didn't want her hearing all the dangers of social media. Not yet at least. But Kim has dedicated herself to making a difference. One child, one student, one family at a time, when it comes to our Drug and Alcohol Alliance. And she deserves a big round of applause for everything she's done. Give you a pitch and we have obviously a proclamation for Substance Use and Misuse Prevention Months.
Thank you Mayor. So just for those who don't know, the alliance is made up of stakeholders in our community. We're a volunteer organization. I've started this program and it's very coincidental that my son, my eldest son, happens to be here this evening for another reason, but I started volunteering.
Great, yes, tough question.
I, when he's ready. When Luke had gone through, it was Project Plus at the time, so it's a Drug and Alcohol Prevention Awareness Program, Prevention Program for our young folks. And I knew at the time as a mom that I always had a gaggle of kids in my house and I just wanted to make sure that I had all of the most current and most valuable information that I could possibly have, to make sure that I was going to be able to be a resource for these kids and make sure they were getting the right information. So again, it's stakeholders in our community, it's moms like me, it's folks on our, members of our Board of Education, our police, our elected. We just have a whole host of folks who are all working together collaboratively to make sure that our young people are given the best resource they can to start off. We graduate nearly 500 students a year in our program, so we're quite proud of that. I've been doing this for almost 14 years at this point. And it's a program that's evolved, not only for young people, but for our residents too. You can never get enough education and enough awareness about it. It's forever changing, the information is forever fluid. So we always want to make sure that we're ensuring that our residents are given the best and up-to-date information that we can. If anybody has any questions, please reach out and look at our website first. We're blessed to have Erica McKee, who was, you know, very sorry she couldn't be here this evening. She wasn't feeling well, but she's our Alliance Coordinator and is doing a fabulous job. So again, our website is a wealth of resource too. And there's information available for our young folks and along the way for all of our residents too. Thank you.
So obviously, this is a passion of Committeewoman Kratz, is ensuring that both parents and students have the resources that they need to avoid these types of what can be very awkward conversations. But if you were at Middletown yesterday, Drug and Alcohol Alliance had their booth there with all the resources that they give out each and every session that our students come in and the candy and snacks, they aren't that bad either at each of these.
And a piece of party, don't forget our.
Yes. So therefore, I'm Mayor Tony Perry in the Middletown Township Committee to hereby proclaim the month of October 2025 as Substance Use and Misuse Prevention Month in Middletown, and call upon all residents to observe this month with appropriate programming, activities, and discussions. And we encourage our community to reach out to the Middletown Alliance for prevention of substance use and connection to resources by visiting MiddletownNJ.org/MiddletownAlliance for more information. Kim, thanks for everything that you do. Appreciate it.
All right, ready? One, two, three. Thank you.
Let's give it up for Karen Senna. Always smiles. Always smiling. So Karen's name right here. So Karen Senna became our deputy clerk right as I was coming onto the Township Committee. And, you know, you value, you have to value the clerk's office so much because without them, very little can proceed when it comes to Township Committee meetings. But above that, it's the everyday items and checklist that have to be done. Publications and newspapers, all the things that have to be just so perfect each and every time. There's little room for error. And when you have Heidi as your clerk, you know, we're so fortunate to have a clerk's office that is not only doing their job on a daily basis, but they're doing so many shared service efforts with different municipalities. I came here the other day and a Deale Police Vehicle was parked right behind Town Hall where thousands, when I say thousands of documents, were being unloaded by Public Works teams to be scanned into our computer system so that, Deale. But when you look at every, from passports to marriage certificates, all these different things, the agenda for our meetings flows through the clerk's office. And when you have a clerk's office that runs so well, it takes great people. And for 21 years, Karen Senna has dedicated herself to making that reality. And Karen, we love you. We're so grateful. We know that you want to spend time with these little buggers in the back. Who I asked your grandson, I told him I loved his shirt and he said, "This is my shirt." But when you have a loving family, a loving staff, and people that are so reliant on you, Karen, it's been an absolute privilege and honor. And to be able to do this on your birthday, sorry about that. But where would you rather, where would you rather be, Karen? But this Township, this Township Committee, so many mayors, every department head, Tony, and I know in particular Heidi, have been the beneficiary of your service and your dedication to Middletown Township. So thank you so much Karen. Appreciate everyone.
I don't have any words. I love working here. I love working with all of you. This has been a non-harmful pleasure to serve this committee and township. And as a resident, it's always been important to me to give the service to the residents. I know, I don't know what else to say.
Well, the Township Committee presents this plaque to Karen Senna in recognition of 21 years of outstanding leadership, dedication, and service. Your commitment and contributions have made a lasting impact and we are so full of gratitude and best wishes for this well, very, very well-earned retirement. So thank you.
I just want to say that Karen and I have been together since 2003, working here for the Township of Middletown. On our first day, we were pulled together out of, formed a bond immediately due to circumstances, but it's literally been a great relationship, working, friendship, everything, passport and deputy. And I think that you have demonstrated so well how people of this township are treated and what they deserve when they come into our offices. And you will always be an inspiration to the people I hire, you know, that you take after you and how you treat everyone, respect and kindness. You know, it's just been such a pleasure and I'm going to miss you.
I'm going to miss all the tips. I'm going to cry.
Let's hit, let's give it up. Go ahead.
Heidi, she leads by example. She sets a very good standard and shows.
Let's give it up for Karen.
Ready? One, two, three. Perfect.
Thank you.
We'll step out.
All right, ready? One, two, three. Perfect.
Thank you. Let's give it up one more time.
I knew so much.
Karen, take the necessary rest of the night off. How you can, yeah, how you can handle it from here. Go celebrate your birthday with your family. All right, now you're back at home?
Yeah.
Okay.
Ready, we've got one more presentation for the record. A proclamation recognizing November eleventh, twenty twenty-five as Veterans Day in the Township of Middletown. At this time, we have approval of minutes for the September fifteenth, twenty twenty-five regular meeting and the October sixth, twenty twenty-five workshop meeting.
Motion to approve. Second.
Committeeman Clark.
Yes.
Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybough.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to approve minutes. At this time, we have public hearing on twenty twenty-five dash four seven three. Ordinance amending Township salary ordinance setting salaries for non-contractable employees for twenty-five to twenty-six.
Any member of the public wishing to speak on public ordinance number two thousand twenty-five dash three four seven three. Seeing no member of the public stepping forward, move the closed public portion and approve. Second.
Committeeman Clark.
Yes.
Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybough.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to adopt this ordinance on second and final reading. This time, we have ordinance twenty twenty-five dash three four eight four. An ordinance of the Township Committee of the Township of Middletown, County of Monmouth, State of New Jersey, authorizing sale on block eighty-four, lot six pursuant to NJ SA forty-eight, colon twelve dash one and sec.
Any member of the public wishing to speak on public ordinance number two thousand twenty-five dash three four eight four. Seeing no member of the public stepping forward, move the closed public portion and approve. Second.
Committeeman Clark.
Yes.
Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybough.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to pass this ordinance on second and final reading. At this time, we have ordinance twenty twenty-five dash three four eight five. An ordinance establishing regulations governing the planning, growing, maintenance, and cultivating of bamboo.
Any member of the public wishing to speak on public ordinance number two thousand twenty-five dash three four eight five. Just state your name for the record, sir.
My name is Thomas Saddleovski. Okay, eight sixty-one Lincoln Street. I would just like to know exactly the way that it's written. Now, you're saying that you're responsible for roots that are growing? Okay, well, you know, the thing is, you know, roots grow all the time, trees. I have bamboo on my property. It was there when I bought the property. And it actually transferred over from the other property.
Okay.
Okay? So what I guess I'm trying to say is, I mean, it's part of homeownership to maintain it.
That's what this ordinance allows for us to have regulations in place to be able to enforce that. Currently, we don't have any.
Okay. Well, wasn't there an ordinance in place that says that you could not plant it?
No. There is no ordinance currently in place, and that was the discussion that we had over the course of several months to decide whether or not we are going to prohibit the planting of bamboo or govern it as a code enforcement issue.
Okay. Well, I can agree with that, but to a certain degree, you don't make it very easy because I know that my landscaping company that takes care of the grounds at my house, basically, it's lawn service company, they can't take the bamboo to the, they won't accept it over at Kane's Lane. I have to take it there.
This is a nuisance issue.
I understand.
It's not, if you want it on your property, you're.
I don't want, I really, you know, look, I would rather not have it, okay? It's, but the thing is that I don't want someone pointing a finger at me and saying, well, these came from your house. You're responsible for it.
Okay, well, the point of this ordinance, are you saying that your neighbor does not want the bamboo that's on your property interfering with their property?
No, I haven't, I haven't. My neighbor has not complained to me about that at all.
Okay. This ordinance is for a pure conversation and discussion and ability for the township to enforce when and if someone does have bamboo on their property. It does not, it does not stop you from planting bamboo, but it cannot interfere with your neighbor's property. And I think that that is an incredibly reasonable thing, given the fact that bamboo roots are very expensive to have to mitigate. You have to drive sheet piling down to prevent them from being able to uproot in, you know, underneath fences and things of that nature. So there is a nuisance to it if, if by chance, a neighbor does not want it. You also have roots that interfere with swimming pools and pavers and.
I understand that. I understand that.
So are you in favor of this or opposed to it?
I'm in favor to a certain degree.
Well, what degree would you like it to stop?
That if I'm making a good faith effort to maintain it, I don't, I don't feel that I should have to, you know, necessarily, since it's already been there. It was planted that I know of. It was planted back in the nineteen eighties, back when it was, there was no ordinance against it.
There's still, there is no ordinance against planting bamboo.
Right.
This is a nuisance ordinance that allows for the township to be able to provide nuisance, deal with nuisance complaints from neighbors that their bamboo from an adjacent property is interfering with the existing footprint of their property. Because it is incredibly expensive. We met with several experts on secondary purposes for bamboo and also the cost to maintain it. And to any individual, thousands of dollars to be able to rid themselves of bamboo on their property could be a serious expense for individuals.
Yeah, it's a serious expense. I've looked into it, okay? So, but I think from a reasonable person's standpoint, okay, within a reason, for a reasonable manner, if you're making a good faith effort to try to control it.
Well, then you wouldn't have any issue with this ordinance then, because it doesn't prohibit it. It just makes sure that you have to maintain it, just like any other hedge that is in a interfering with a sidewalk. We require, if we receive a complaint, that those individuals have to maintain it because the person's walking down a sidewalk or needing to be able to look around a bend at a stop sign should be able to do so safely and walk to school or wherever safely. So I don't think in reality, it's any different than any other problem that occurs when overgrown vegetation does come through.
Right, well, I had, I had a root from my neighbor's property, from a tree, that came in and busted out my foundation. I took care of that. Now, that's not his fault, okay? That's just part of maintaining your property. In my, that's in my opinion, okay? I'm not going to sue him because a thing came through it. He's not responsible for the tree, okay? This is what I'm trying to, trying to, you know, bring forth is that there's certain things within your control and certain things that are beyond your control. I think if you try to maintain a good faith effort to try to control it.
But this isn't, this isn't to punish people that are making a good faith effort. This is to, to be able to provide residents that are not maintaining it, to your point, are able to have a remedy about that, because currently, there is no remedy.
I could just explain.
Go ahead.
What it says is, it says you can't have it within ten feet of your property line. That way, you're keeping it from interfering with your neighbor. Now, there are some neighbors who share bamboo across the property line. You may be in that situation. If your neighbor's not complaining, we're not going to enforce it. It's only if it's actually becoming a real problem for neighbor and they make a complaint, then we'd have to enforce the ordinance. That means you got to cut it back ten feet from your property line and ten feet from the street. That's really what, you can still have bamboo. You just got to keep it more than, more than ten feet away from.
Okay, so then you could get into a situation where, let's say, you don't want it, but your neighbor likes it. So now what are you supposed to do?
If it's on your, if it's on your property, you can do whatever you want.
If it's within that ten feet, then I would be cutting it down on their side too, though.
No, well, you can't cut anything down on someone else's property. You control your property line and your neighbor controls their property line.
Yeah, but you just said there's a ten-foot buffer. You're not supposed to plant it within ten feet.
Of your neighbor.
Of your neighbor.
Right.
Right, okay? So if it's on the property line and I cut it down on my side, it's still within that ten-feet buffer zone on his side.
Yeah, then they have to do it too.
But, you know, I'd rather avoid doing that. I'd like to keep the peace, you know what I'm saying? But it's just.
Well, you're not, you're not, well, respectfully, you don't work in our code enforcement office and you're not receiving the complaints that we get from current neighbors that are having a problem.
I understand. I understand completely. I've lived at that house since two thousand and three. Believe me, it's a battle, okay, to maintain it. And, you know, looking down different avenues, yes, you know, right now, going through the process of actually putting bamboo barrier down, okay? But there's certain areas that it's grown and it's jumped over from the other property, okay? And it's there. And, you know, it's hard to get to, you know, it's going to be, but I'm trying to maintain it within a reasonable, within a reasonable fashion, but it was not me who planted it. That's the thing. You know, this is what I'm trying to establish, so it's, you know, it's a tough situation with that. It really is. I mean, but I think if you're making a good faith effort to do it, I mean.
This isn't to try and interfere in anyone's good faith efforts. This is trying to provide people with an avenue that they are able to utilize so that if it does become a nuisance, they are, we are able to deal with it.
So, all right, well, if anybody else that wants to say.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Hello.
Hello.
David Pierce, eight six five Lincoln Street. So following up on that hypothetically, we have a bamboo that Tom just explained, running along the back of the properties, okay? Now, I've talked to my new neighbor to say, hey, this bamboo is going to start coming this way. If they neglect to do anything about it, it's still my responsibility, though, because it's coming from mine?
No, that's the exact purpose of this ordinance is to provide you with the avenue to be able to enforce, making sure that bamboo does not come onto your property.
But wait, it's already on my property. All right, so it's going along the rear of the properties. And then it starts coming up because the leaves go all over, as we know, right? So if they neglect to do anything of it and they sell the house, somebody else comes in and says, I don't like that. They know of this ordinance nuisance. Am I on the hook for it?
You would be, you'd be responsible for maintaining it on the, on the back part of your property, yes, under that circumstance.
On the back part of my property, but at the same time, it came over and then went adjacent. So then how, who's responsible for it? Me?
You are responsible for what happens on your, you don't cut your neighbor's grass. You're not responsible for the leaves on your neighbor's lawn. Your neighbors are not responsible for, vice versa. So understanding that if you and your current neighbor are okay with it, then there's no reason to engage with our code enforcement officials. If your new neighbor, in that hypothetical that you're referring to, wants it gone, then they would be able to request, hopefully, through a neighborly conversation first. But code enforcement then would be able to go out and provide you with the proper guidance on where and if you had to remove that.
Because again, as Tom explained, that came from several houses down. So now it's come across, you know, seven properties. And if we let it go another fifteen years, it will be twenty properties.
That's why we're doing this ordinance.
Gotcha. I got you. But when it starts coming up and, I mean, who do we, who do we put the finger to who started?
Well, the.
I hear you. You can't. That's the whole, I don't see how you come.
But roots of a tree that are on my property that now interfere with, in this gentleman's situation, where a root was planted, he's saying that his neighbor's not responsible for a root. It's the same thing if a tree sits on a property, if a tree branch falls on my fence from my neighbor's yard and breaks my fence, well, then I have to deal with that.
Right. But what about if you're, what about if the tree is in the right of way of the township? And it's their tree. It's their roots. Who's responsible for it?
The township.
It could be a township issue, yeah.
Okay. All right.
We talk to insurance companies about this stuff almost every day, believe it or not.
Any other member of the public wishing to speak on public ordinance number two thousand twenty-five dash three four eight five? Seeing no other member of the public stepping forward, move the closed public portion and approve.
Second.
Committeeman Clark.
Yes.
Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybough.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to pass this ordinance on second and final reading. At this time, we have introduction of proposed ordinance twenty twenty-five dash three four eight six. An ordinance amending chapter two forty of the Code of the Township of Middletown governing fee schedules for passports and registrar's office.
Motion to introduce. Second.
Committeeman Clark.
Yes.
Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybough.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to pass this ordinance on first reading with a public hearing to be scheduled for November tenth, twenty twenty-five. At this time, we have ordinance twenty twenty-five dash three four eight seven. An ordinance amending chapter two forty of the Code of the Township of Middletown to establish amusement game licensing fees.
Motion to introduce. Second.
Committeeman Clark. Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybough.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to pass this ordinance on first reading with a public hearing to be held November tenth, twenty twenty-five. At this time, I'd like to ask the Township Committee to adopt a consent agenda, which would include resolutions twenty-five dash three zero five through twenty-five dash three sixteen, removing twenty-five dash three oh eight and twenty-five dash three twelve for a separate vote.
Motion to approve a consent agenda. Second.
Committeeman Clark.
Yes.
Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybough.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to adopt consent agenda. At this time, we have resolution twenty-five dash three zero eight. A resolution authorizing contract to a vendor with a New Jersey co-op for playground and recreational services.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Seconded by Committeewoman Kratz.
Committeeman Clark.
Yes.
Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybough.
Recuse.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to adopt ordinance twenty-five dash three oh eight with recusal noted. At this time, we have resolution twenty-five dash three twelve. A resolution supporting adoption of Senate Bill number three three five nine, Assembly Bill number three seven nine seven, criminalizing the manufacture, sale, and possession of substances containing kratom.
Committeewoman Kratz, you want to make a motion on that?
I would. I would like to make a motion.
Okay, second it.
Committeeman Clark.
Yes.
Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes, with comment, please.
Yes.
So just to just take a quick moment, this is a super important, really important piece of legislation because for those who don't know, kratom is a readily available product that's available in convenience stores and really in anywhere that you walk into. So it's a product that is derived from a tropical tree in Southeast Asia. It's a dangerous substance. There's evidence to show that it's detrimental. It causes psychotic episodes. It's highly addictive. It's touted in convenience stores, typically in a drink fashion. It's touted as being very healthy. It's an energy booster. If you've been into any convenience store, you perhaps may even see these energy drinks on the counters. The purpose of it is to really prohibit these places from selling it because currently, there's no age restriction. So our young people, you could be the age of ten, eleven, and walk into these stores and use this product. And what they're finding is, is that it's so addictive that people are having to go to rehab in order to combat it. So it certainly is a product that I'm quite proud that we are going to work hard to make sure that our young people and our residents don't fall prey to it. And it's really quite, quite important. It's one of those things that, just moving forward even as parents, that we always keep an eye on and make sure that we're paying attention to what our kids bring home. You know, sometimes our kids, you know, are afforded some independence, which is a wonderful thing, but they're purchasing drinks in these stores that we're not always looking. our kids, you know, are afforded some independence, which is a wonderful thing, but they're purchasing drinks in, in these stores that we're not always looking at what the ingredients are. So really important to just keep an eye on that. So I am a resounding, very much in support of this one for sure.
Deputy Mayor Hybeau.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
I just looked up. I made sure Celsius didn't contain any kratom, so I can vote yes.
Um, motion carries to adopt resolution 25-312. At this time, we have Township Committee comments.
All right, uh, Committeeman Clark.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, first, I'd like to congratulate the entirety of Middletown on an extremely successful Middletown Day. I'm sure the mayor's going to expound on my comments. Um, but every department, uh, had a integral role in making Middletown Day, uh, the amazing day that it was. Mother Nature was super cooperative as well with the weather. Um, but it was just a great day all around. So, uh, that was my first comment there was to thank everybody involved. Um, second, uh, Committeewoman Kratz, the, uh, your, your comments about the Alliance and this, uh, support that we just put in for the, um, banning of kratom, uh, I wasn't aware of it until, uh, you and our administrator made me aware of it and, you know, doing some research. It's scary that this stuff is out there and that is so readily available to our young, our young people. So I appreciate your leadership and, uh, putting us in a good direction to make sure that our young'uns are in good, good shape in that respect. Um, to the Elks, thank you for your help with the, um, with the veterans housing, and to my friends, Dennis and Linda Mc- Linda McGinnis. Uh, they amazed me. Every, every time I get to be around them, they figure out a different way to, um, to just make it, make a difference. And I've been, I've been working with Dennis for nearly 30 years, and every time I've seen him and his wife do something through Jason's dreams, it's, it becomes something that I tell a story about, and, you know, to evolve it from children with needs to adults with needs, to families with needs, to now veterans with needs is, uh, is pretty remarkable. And I think, you know, to the mayor's comments earlier, uh, Jason would be super proud, and if anybody really got to know Dennis and knew how important this dream of Jason's is for him to keep, it's, uh, you, you, you can see it in his, in his face when he talks, but man, if you just spend a half hour with him, you'll, you'll truly, truly get it. So, um, thanks to everybody involved in that project, and, uh, I think that's all I have for right now, Mayor. Thank you.
All right. Committeewoman Kratz.
Thank you. So we are on quite the Alliance, uh, trend here this evening, but just wanted to share with you just a few things that are coming up, um, with Erica that was, was unable to be with us this evening. So Red Ribbon Week is October 23rd through the 31st. It's America's largest and longest-running drug and alcohol prevention and awareness campaign. Uh, the Alliance was able to fund, uh, campaign materials and student giveaways for all three middle schools and two high schools right here in town. Um, there's also a free public Narcan training. Um, November 6th from 5 to 6 o'clock in the training room, which is on our first floor. Uh, participants will receive a certificate completion, of completion, an overdose responsive kit, and an over, and overdose education materials. Um, and also the Great American Smokeout is Thursday, November 20th. Uh, the Alliance will also participate in the American Cancer Society's annual event to encourage Americans to quit smoking. Uh, the Alliance will have a table in Town Hall Lobby once again this year from 9 o'clock till 3:00 PM, where people can come and make their own smoking and/or vaping, um, quit kits and, and get further resources to, to help them quit. Um, so that's out there. Uh, again, I'll echo Committeeman, uh, Clark's, uh, comments about Middletown Day yesterday. It was quite a fabulous day. It was wonderful to see so many families enjoying themselves, uh, and, and testament to all of the hard work of our employees and our staff who, who did everything to make it possible. So we're real thankful for that. Um, any opportunity we get to highlight our first responders in addition is always a great day, so we're, we're always thankful for their service and, and we're forever grateful for that. Um, I will, I feel like I have talked a lot this evening, so I'm going to end here, but thank you.
Thank you, Committeewoman Kratz. DM.
Just told me you took my time. I did. Uh, just quickly here, so I, I did, I did want to mention Middletown Day because our team did a ton of work on it. Uh, I know the mayor has tasked every single department in many meetings to get this, uh, done, so I know our team is, uh, the real deal and they got it done. Thank you, everyone. Um, I gotta give a special shout-out to Ted, uh, because I think I call him probably the most, I would say, and I, I'm sorry, but I do drive around town a lot. So, uh, if anyone hasn't driven on Navas Ingraham Road and Locust Point Road, you can see the paving that was completed there. So, uh, that's a great job. I, I appreciate it. I know everyone in town appreciates it, so thank you very much. Uh, just want to mention, uh, I, I spent some time at the Westminster, uh, um, church on Tyndale Road this weekend doing some, uh, flags there. Uh, there's 7,000 flags, and I think the mayor said he did 200, so I had to do more than him.
I said Reagan did 200.
Oh, sorry. My back is still a little sore, but it was, uh, it wa- a great event. Uh, I, I, I don't know the data there actual, uh, but it's on their sign. I'll, I'll get it next to me. November 8th. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. Uh, it's, it's something that everyone should come out to, to be a part of. It's a, it's a, it's a, it's a great event. They do a great job there. And, uh, I would definitely encourage, uh, all these young people here in the crowd to help us with the flags next year because it's, uh, you're right at the right height. So, all right, that's all I have, Mayor.
Quit while you're at it.
Um-
You have your poor daughter putting those flags in your back, right?
Um, no, just want to say, uh, again, um, to Janet Delitt and Sarah Finery, um, really appreciate, uh, their, um, leadership when it came to Middletown Day. Um, but was, was a group effort, and I want to thank, um, Gianna and Tara and Laura and Shannon and Raven, um, for everything that they did. I want to thank Tony, um, uh, and, and our entire Public Works team, park maintenance, um, everything to make that day possible. Um, it, it, I mean, Janet texted me this evening about next year's date already. Um, so it really starts, um, you know, uh, early, and it takes a lot of planning and a lot of effort. So I just want to give them a, a big shout-out and thank you for such, such a success, um, last night. Uh, it, it really means a lot, and the thousands and thousands and thousands of people that came out yesterday, uh, all talking about how wonderful the time that they had, um, at, at Middletown Day. Um, uh, to, uh, to all the folks in the congregation at Westminster Presbyterian Church, I'm going to thank them. Um, they had, uh, a bunch of groups coming in, beginning at 9:00 AM on Saturday, all through the afternoon. Reagan and I were there. Um, and, uh, it really is eye-opening when, when you are the ones placing the flags, um, down. Um, because you, when you attend the event, but not the, the flag planting ceremony, um, it's, uh, you, you see this unbelievable, um, planes of, of, of almost, of flags that just, that just are all moving and all waving in the same direction, and, and you feel a sense of, of, of sorrow, but you get a sense of, of pride that there were that many individuals that were willing to give their lives for their country. Um, and, uh, so to everyone at Westminster Presbyterian, I do have to give a shout-out to Alpha Wave Group, um, that is a veterans organization that was there. And, um, this is an organization run by marine veterans that, uh, work. Um, they were formed a few years back. Um, and it's a local organization that gets, um, veterans out, and it teaches them to meditate and surf, um, and really, uh, understand how to control their, their thoughts, their emotions, um, and to bring them peace of mind when they are, um, you know, filled with, um, uh, some horrible memories, um, but to be able to give them that, that peace and sense of purpose and, and moment, um, is really wonderful. So I want to thank them for their efforts, um, being there. Um, and, uh, I, I wish, uh, Westminster Presbyterian Church, um, uh, Dave DRC and everybody that was involved, um, a, a great deal of gratitude and luck, um, for their event on November 8th. Um, today, we, uh, did a few things for our fire department. Um, number one, our new chief's vehicle, uh, was purchased tonight. Um, and the new chief's vehicles, the trucks, uh, the, the newest one, is that Jimmy Abus's, uh, truck? So Jimmy's, um, uh, looked great, fitted out. I know Jake's is on its way, and, uh, and our newest chief's vehicle is, uh, is coming. But tonight, we added, uh, another resolution and component to the, um, Middletown Veterans Incentive Program, and that is the Tuition Reimbursement Program, um, which we are very excited about. Um, now, uh, members of our volunteer fire and EMS OEM are able to receive college credits from Brookdale Community College, um, at no cost to them, um, so that they can, uh, take classes, um, and grab a, a greater, uh, educational, um, position so that when they decide what they want to do, if it's right for them or not right for them, they have that opportunity without being burdened by the cost of that. So, um, uh, Tony, Heidi, I want to thank you for your leadership on that. Um, and, uh, this is at no cost to the township, um, that we are able to do this. So, uh, I want to thank the chiefs. Um, I want to thank all of our first responders and hope that, uh, many of them will take advantage of this, this program. Um, uh, finally, uh, this is our last meeting before Election Day. I would encourage, uh, obviously, many of you have, uh, many Middletown residents have taken advantage of vote-by-mail. Um, I hope that, uh, all, everyone that has that VBM takes the time to, uh, look at all the candidates running, um, on, on, on the ballot, um, and send their VBM back. That is your ability to make your voice heard. Uh, early voting does start on October 25th, and your last day to request a vote-by-mail, if you can't vote on Election Day, is October 28th, uh, and I encourage every resident, um, to go out, express your vote. Vote for the people that, uh, you share, um, your vision for Middletown Township, um, for Monmouth County, and for the state of New Jersey as we head up to Election Day on November 4th. With that being said, I'll open up for public comment. Any member of the public wishing to make a pub- public comment may do so. We ask that you state your name for the record, and that you keep your comments to five minutes. At four minutes, I'll let you know that you have one minute remaining. Luke Kratz is ready to go, and he is going to be my first selection, and I might defer this question to Committeewoman Kratz. I'm not entirely sure yet. Luke Kratz, please state your name for the record.
Um, hello, my name is, um, Luke Kratz.
Oh, okay, good. Got that for the record, Brian? Excellent.
And, um, I would like to ask about with, um, passing of 2532, I just wanted to ask about specifically with kratom being banned, um, what are the exact enforcement such as like fees? Is there going to be a fee? Is there going to be possible jail time or misdemeanor? I was just kind of curious on like the crackdown of that.
So, uh, the, but I'll, I'll allow you to answer, just for a point of clarification, uh, Mr. Kratz. Um, this is a resolution supporting, uh, legislation. Um, the Township Committee was actually moving in the direction of banning, uh, this product in town, but state law prohibits us from being able to do that on the advice of council. Um, so we were unable to do that. Uh, but the one thing that, uh, everyone should know is that, um, kratom's, uh, uh, more common term is, is actually, and I can't believe I'm saying it, is gas station heroin. Um, it is manufactured, it was, it was originated out of Indonesia, where it is now banned. Um, seven US states have banned this product already. Um, I, I'm kind of surprised that New Jersey has not already banned it. Um, but, uh, I'll defer to Committeewoman Kratz because she had such a wealth of information over there on kratom. I will defer to her for the rest of your answer, Mr. Kratz. Is that okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
There you go. Well, hello, Mr. Kratz.
Hello, Mom.
And may I ask you a question? What is the purpose of your question this evening? It's nice to see you here.
Uh, thank you. Um, the purpose of my question is because for my college course on public administration, um, we were all tasked to go down to our local, uh, committee people and ask a question here specifically today, and I told my professor, actually, my mom sits on the committee, and he didn't believe me, so I said, I'll take a photo, so just to make sure. And, um, just another question on Mom after this. What is for dinner?
Reservations. For sure. Um, no, so this is, like we talked about, this is, is an exciting piece of legislature so that we can continue to protect all of you young folks from, from being exposed to this kind of, you know, nonsense and this kratom that we've, you know, the DEA, there's just been so much recent evidence to show that, you know, like the mayor shared, that it is considered, and the, the slang term is, you know, convenience store heroin or convenience store cocaine. It's, it's that addictive. And it's a shame that, that folks are becoming so addictive to it that they're forced into rehab, you know, to try and beat it. So I, um, it's, it's really quite impressive that, you know, we're going to be moving forward and continuing to work to, to make a difference, to eliminate it altogether. I know it's not exactly what we wanted, um, but it's, it's certainly a start in the right direction.
Thank you.
Luke, by the way, Joe has taken a, a screenshot of the, uh, video, so we'll be happy to provide you that, with that photograph.
Thank you.
All right. Any other member of the public wishing to make a public comment? John, come on down. Yeah, Luke, you could have, you could have moved the microphone up. It was, you know.
In that same move, putting the flags down.
John Spinelli, 91 Burlington Avenue. Um, this might be a little bit of a silly question, but, um, you know, I was just thinking about the, the Bu- the old buffalo statue on, on a cherry tree farm road. Do you, do you guys know what happened to it?
Uh, interesting question. Um, a, a few years back, before the, uh, owner passed away, um, I just so happened to bump into, um, that individual's son who asked me if the township would be willing to accept it as a donation, and I said, yeah, we'll take it. We'll, we'll take it. Um, I, I don't know what happened to it in the ge- in the end, but we did follow up with that individual several times. I knew the house was sold. Um, and the person didn't want a giant buffalo statue sitting on their front lawn. Um, but we were willing to take it and actually put it into, I think it was countryside. Um, uh, but the, the owner must have sold it or something like that. So, um, it would have, you know, I, I also thought we could put it on top of the new claudie so that there would be a cow and a buffalo on top. Um, but, uh, but, uh, it, it didn't end up coming to fruition.
Okay. Yeah, I was just gonna ask you about that, you know.
Are you in the market for a buffalo statue, John? Okay.
I wish I was. I think, I think my parents would, uh, like that on their property, but I, uh, yeah, I was gonna propose, I thought it would be, uh, especially with America 250. Uh, I'm not sure if you guys know that the bison is the national mammal of the United States, so I thought that would be a cool, uh, statue to either have at Town Hall or one of the parks here. So, although unfortunately, like you said, it's, no, we don't know what happened to it, but.
Yeah, so, good thought, though. Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Any other member of the public wishing to make a public comment? Yes, ma'am.
Morning Kramer, 630 Hopping Road, Belford. Um, a neighbor of mine and I have a couple of questions that we asked Jersey Central Power and Light about their major project that they have running through the township, uh, specifically on our street between Roxbury, uh, Road and Hopping Road.
Mm-hmm.
And when I spoke to, uh, Jersey Central Power and Light, and I asked them three specific questions, I was given misinformation. So I came to Town Hall, and Mr. Mercantante was very gracious. He took time from his day to take me to the, an office, and
Yep.
he, um, did correctly answer one of the questions for me. And one of them was about the height of the poles, the size of the poles, which I was told by Jersey Central Power and Light was going to be the same as the poles that were there, which it isn't. And the other thing that I asked about was, um, because the poles were large, were going to be larger, if the, um, the, um, voltage going through the lines was going to be increased, and I was told no. But when I found out that the poles were similar to the ones on Highway 36, I noticed that there's a crossbar on the poles behind our houses that, um, have two lines on them, so I'm assuming it's a circuit. I mean, I'm not an engineer, an electrical engineer.
The redundancy line.
Right. And so the poles, though, on the highway have three of them. So I was struggling to figure out, well, how could it be the same amount of voltage? Um, because we're concerned about the electromagnetic fields, and the properties that, um, are on my, in my neighborhood, they're small properties. I don't think I'm 200 feet from that pole and I'm across the street. So, um, I was contacting some agencies to find out because I wasn't getting the answers from Jersey Central Power and Light. And so I called some government agencies. I called the BPU. Nobody knows about this project, even though it goes all the way from Belford to Red Bank. So when I saw the map that Mr. Mercantante showed me, I said to myself, gee, this looks awfully familiar to the 365 project that they stopped that was supposed to go from Aberdeen to Red Bank, because it's winding up in Red Bank. So when I spoke to somebody, I called a couple of the-
Meaning the monster power lines? Is that what you were talking about?
Um, yes.
Okay.
So when I, um, contacted two, two of the county commissioners, because I figured somebody in this, somebody around here has to know what this- because I figured somebody in this, somebody around here has to know what this is about because I saw on a, on a website that they have, the Jersey Central Power and Light, when they have a big project, has to go through the county. So, I called two county commissioners, and one returned my call on Friday. And what I was told was that they contacted, they spoke to their contact in Jersey Central Power and Light, who told them, when I was, asked them if there was a name for the project, they said, "No." Well, there is. It is, in fact, a part of the Energize 365 program. It's called the Monmouth County Reliability Project. And I was told that the person from Jersey Central told the county commissioner that this was the Safer Alternative Program that was presented to them by the RAGE group that sued Jersey Central Power and Light. So, I said, "Well, if it's so safe, then why is it not back going from Aberdeen to Red Bank? And now, why is it behind our properties?" My neighbor is less than 40 feet from that pole from her house. And I was told I should come to the Township Committee meeting and ask some questions. So, my neighbor and I put together, we have seven questions. And I don't expect you to answer the questions tonight, but I can also give you a copy of them. But the questions are, how tall from the ground up are the replacement poles going to be between Roxbury Road and Hopping? Because they told us it was dependent upon the terrain. The current KVs on the single transmission line pole between Roxbury Road and Hopping Road is currently 34.5 KVs. When the poles are replaced with the new taller poles that are like the ones on Highway 36, that appear to have six lines as opposed to two currently, how many KVs will be going through each of these lines? Number three, when another area loses power, Jersey Central Power and Light gave me an example. Oh, if Red Bank loses power with this new program that we have, we can flip a switch and switch it over to Middletown, which was interesting to me because my power went out on Thanksgiving Day with no storm, no wind, no car accident last year with the house full of people. So, I don't understand how if they're not increasing the KVs, then how are they going to transfer another town over to here? Number four, overtime, can Jersey Central Power and Light increase the KVs on these transmission lines? Number five, does the township have a copy of the Safer Alternative Plan presented to Jersey Central Power and Light by the engineers hired by RAGE in their lawsuit with Jersey Central Power and Light over Project 365? If so, would the public be able to view the proposal so we can have a better idea of what this project entails? Number six, does the township have a health and safety report from First Energy about the close proximity of the homes to the electromagnetic fields created by the high tension lines? Number seven, just two more questions. Why was there no press release from the township similar to the one used in Haslett Township to inform residents about this project? And are you planning to release information to the residents in Middletown minutes or local online and print newspapers? The, Haslett Township actually posted, interestingly enough, it was a press release from Jersey Central Power and Light about the program that went from this past summer, and this is dated July of 2025, the project that they just worked on from Keyport, Union Beach, and Haslett. And the last is, can you please inform us when roads are being closed due to the project? Today, the southbound road, the southbound side or the southbound lane of Sleepy Hollow Road was closed while Jersey Central Power and Light contractors were working, doing the work they did behind Roxbury and Hopping. They continued, I got to tell you, they're working at warp speed, whatever this project is, because they're already up at Sleepy Hollow Road, and they only worked in our neighborhood four days. Most people living in the East Road area of Belford use Sleepy Hollow Road to get to Highway 35. Alternative plans could be made if we were notified of a road closure or future road closures. So, thank you in advance for answering our questions and concerns. And I can give you a copy of the questions if you'd like.
I will take a copy of the report for you. We'll be sure to get you all those answers back.
I would like to thank publicly, though, Mr. Mercantante because he was very gracious that day. And in, you know, he answered a lot of my questions, and he showed me the map, which quite frankly concerned me. But he didn't have to do that, take the time from his day. So, thank you, Mr. Mercantante. I appreciate it.
You kind of did have to do that, because that's what I did.
That's his job, but yeah.
But, but just to be clear, we've asked them repeatedly about this, that the 34.5 KV is staying the same. There are additional 34.5 KV lines being, so that they, being run so that they have redundancy. If every area goes down, they can back it up with a second circuit. And though the electromagnetic radiation that comes from these isn't cumulative, you know, in other words, you're only exposed to the highest one on pole. So, if there's three 34.5 KV lines, you don't get three times the amount of electromagnetic radiation. You just, it's just from the highest ones.
Okay, but we're still, we're still concerned about the, we're still concerned about the voltage. And I don't quite understand, if it's staying the same, then why are the poles low now?
They're different circuits.
Okay.
They serve different circuits.
It wouldn't have been helpful, though, if, if the township would have informed us about what was happening in our neighborhood.
Well, all of the adjoining property owners were notified at least three times previously by JCP.
By Jersey Central Power and Light?
Yeah.
But I wouldn't be because I live across the street, but I'm less than 200 feet from those poles. And according to what I've read, you're really only safe if you're beyond 200 feet from those poles.
I think that would be questionable.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you. Any other member of the public wishing to make a public comment? Yes, sir. That's okay, I have a loud voice anyway. Devin Rafferty, Leonardo, New Jersey, need my address? Okay. I just wanted to do, I have a few questions, I suppose, about the functional distribution of tax revenue for Middletown, and then how it compares to other townships across Monmouth County, and then within the larger regional area, right? Whether that be Ocean or Middlesex. In the notice that was sent out about, oh, there's our other thing. The notice about Middletown taxpayers, right? It says Board of Ed, Board of Ed 61%, Middletown Township 23%, County Government 10.5%, Middletown Township Open Space 2%. Is that through the municipality that Open Space 2%?
The township's open space is through the township.
Yeah, I would assume so. Okay, so that's effectively 25% for the township. And then the Middletown Township Public Library is also through the municipality, correct?
No, they get their own, their own library.
Their own separate levy that they would administer on their own?
Correct. They have a Board of Trustees, and the open space has to be done just like the county does their open space because it is a dedicated fund that is required and can only be spent on open space. The rest of the money, the 23%, comes in through the general fund, which is then proceeded and utilized in the operating budget.
Okay. Thank you. So, what I did was I went and I looked up some data to see how Middletown's distribution compares to other towns in Monmouth County over, say, 2022, 2023, 2024, right? And then I looked at Middlesex and Ocean, as I alluded to, right? So, what I found that was kind of interesting is a lot of the other towns in Middletown, in a lot of the other towns in Monmouth County, of similar population size, similar median incomes, seem to have a municipal township levy somewhere in the high teens. For comparison, we're at 23, 24% in this town. The school, which has its own separate levy, here is listed as 61%, but other towns in Monmouth County are in the 68, 69, 70, 71% range. And I factored in libraries or the fact that some of these towns have county libraries and things like that. So, then I guess my question is, is there a specific reason why the Middletown municipal levy is higher than other towns in Monmouth County?
Well, I think what you're inferring, inferring is that the township gets to set those percentages. We do not. Each governing body, whether it be the county or the municipality or the Board of Education, sets their budget. That, those numbers are then submitted to the county. The county tax assessor then sends back to our CFO the percentages broken out as those budgets are finalized and passed. They take the culmination of the funds and then divide them up and provide the percents of what they are so that they can be distributed to the residents of the respective municipalities to be able to understand what percentage of their tax dollars goes to which entity.
That's what I assume, okay. So, then my question would be, if that's the case where you submit your budgets, and then those respective percentages are split up by the county, correct?
They're set by their own, their own government agency.
But your gross revenue dollar amounts are set by the entity within, say, this town that needs that, correct?
The, the taxes that are collected are distributed by the, through the municipality, right? But we don't set those percentages or those numbers. We only set them for the municipality.
Based upon how much money you expect you would need?
Based on the assessed values of the homes within your municipality. That's why they fluctuate from town to town because you have some municipalities that have regionalized school districts. You have some that don't get charged for libraries like Middletown Township because Middletown has our own county, our own municipal library.
Right. Which is not included, but okay.
But the, but towns that are a part of the county system receive those, receive that tax, right? So, but the municipality does not set those percentages. It's set by the culmination of the total assessed value of the municipality and then divided up amongst what is passed by each respective government agency.
Understood. So, then I guess I was, that's what you get for having kids. I always time it out on 30 seconds so they can't get onto Amazon or YouTube.
They buying anything good?
Nothing off Amazon's good. And by the way, I think the kratom, that's a wonderful initiative. But, so, I thought about the school district, right? And that would be interesting because at least for some of the towns in Monmouth County, they would benefit from unit costs, right? Some of our surrounding towns, since they have regional, K to 12, regional high schools, you would, in theory, get a unit cost deduction by collectivizing through economies of scale. So, therefore, they should actually have, well, you might have to run two separate school districts. Okay, so then, that's fine. I guess my question really, when it boiled down to it, was within one town, say, you have 24, 25% historically, and, you know, historically about 60% that goes to the school district. Other towns somehow do that for 18, 19% for the municipality and about 70% for their school district. So, what is it about the political culture of those towns or their municipalities that have gotten their funding needs together for what would be their one-fifth of the town's budget versus we have to do it for a quarter?
I'm not sure I'm understanding or your understanding of how it's divided. I don't get a say as to what the school district's portion is.
Absolutely understand.
They pass a budget.
Right.
And that budget is then determined by assessed values, right?
Yeah.
And what, and what they would receive, and then what the increase on their budget may be.
Right. So, I guess if I could phrase it another way, then, you put in for the amount of funds that you perceive Middletown to need. The school district puts in what it perceives it needs. And then that gets aggregated through the county, am I correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, then, when this is all said and done, and you figure out what those percentages actually are, for Middletown, it comes out to roughly 24, 25%. When, say, Manalapan does it, the township of Manalapan figures out that that is actually only 18 to 19%.
Okay, so, so, so then, we collect the trash for the school district, right? I don't know if Manalapan has township-wide trash. I have no idea. Pretty large expense for, for the township at the rate of, what, Colleen? How much is trash on a yearly basis? Eight million dollars. So, Manalapan might not have municipal trash. Every single municipality, they don't. Okay, so, eight million dollars for the township of Middletown is now automatically off the books from Manalapan because they don't collect trash. We used to not have a trash district in Middletown, and then the township decided about eight years ago that everybody in Middletown Township was going to be a part of the trash. You can't look at every single percentage and just compare it to Middletown and say, "Why aren't they even?" Because you have Seabright that has a $25 million budget. Five million of that budget goes to Shore Regional High School because they subsidize Shore Regional because their assessed values are higher than those that participate in Shore Regional. So, looking at it from just a percentage-to-percentage basis may be a thought. But when, in reality, because that's what you, we have to exist in, it is not just 18% versus 23% or vice versa. In Millstone, for example, they don't have a police department. So, they don't need a police. Well, our number one expense in the township is our police department. So, boy, if Middletown just decided, "Well, we don't want a police department in this, in this town," which none of us on this township committee would ever suggest, well, boy, that'll save us a lot of money. If we decided not to pay health insurance for our employees in retirement, boy, that would save us a lot of money, but we do. County doesn't do that, so you don't get charged for that. Looking at paper and saying that this isn't fair because X is 23% and another town is 18% without looking as to how you got to those numbers is, is not a good demonstration of how those numbers are formulated. When you compare apples to apples, then it's, then it's fair. But if you're just going to say, "Well, why is it fair for 23% versus 18%?" Because the services that are being provided to those residents of that municipality are not equal to, they are actually less than, the residents of another municipality.
Okay. That was my question.
There you go.
My question, if you remember, I wasn't sure by the tone of your voice that was developed.
Oh, no, I'm just, I'm telling you exactly what you got to know.
My question effectively was, is there a difference between municipalities of why that might necessarily exist?
In every municipality, there's differences. Differences in the number of police officers, differences in services that they provide their residents. It's, it's all a matter of looking at the services that are provided versus the services that are not. And that's why we recently, just a year ago, took over the tax assessor's office in Millstone. Great shared service for us. We get to handle their, their taxes, they get to save money, and we get to generate revenue from it. Heidi has now probably half a dozen shared services because municipalities all across Monmouth County were not properly scanning documents. Well, now, our staff has the ability because we've scanned all, a lot of the documents that we have, and, and every day, we scan more and more shared services that are able to be done. Municipalities depend on Middletown to be able to do the proper documentation and scanning. And that's why municipalities look towards Middletown in what programs we're offering, what services we offer our residents because there's not one person in here that wants to go back to the days of not having trash collection be done by one entity. You know, we're going to have blips in every once in a while, and, you know, Committee Woman Kratz's trash doesn't get picked up because she's the only one on the block. But I remember the days of, when I lived in River Plaza, when four trash trucks would drive down the street every single day because 18 different neighbors had 18 different companies, and Jake Sullivan, Chief Lawrence, rather, is shaking his head because he's, he still lives in River Plaza, and he's like, "Hell, yeah, those were bad days." So, looking at it apples to apples is the way to go. Looking at it from percentages is not.
I'm glad you phrased it that way because if you see it in that light, the percentages are really a breakdown of where you are going to use your real resources and where you're not, right? Whether it's going to be trash pickup or something else, right? Or the police, as you alluded to.
Well, you, you decide as a governing body what you're going to do.
Right. The expression of your political culture.
But, but the, well, that's-
And so, then I guess the obvious conclusion would be, if there's a comparatively lower funding that goes towards schools and a comparatively higher that goes towards the town.
But the percentages are based on overall appraisals.
I didn't interrupt you, sir. I guess it would be an expression of the political culture that we prioritize municipal services and channeling those services through this governing body rather than, say, the public education system.
The Board of Education gets to decide how much they want to raise taxes.
Correct.
Okay? That is how those decisions get made. Your question should be directed at the Board of Education to be able to answer those questions.
I do.
We break down hours for every, every single year, a tax receipt calculator. Every single year, we upload the assessed values and demonstrate exactly where your taxes are being paid. You plug in your, your assessed value, and we break it down. You, you're basing your argument over- You, you're, you're basing your argument over an overall number. And that is not the way to break down how and where services. I don't get to decide where, what, how many teachers are hired. We get to decide how many police officers are hired. And that's how we're gonna break down our 23% of, of the tax revenue on top of our library, working and providing services to the town and their revenue that they receive based off assessed values. Their value, their, their percentage never increases. Their percentages are based on the overall assessed value of, of the municipality. It's, it remains flat. They don't get, they don't have the authority to raise taxes. So it is the county, the town, and the Board of Education that get those, make those decisions.
Yes, yes, thank you. I know my time is probably up. I just wanted to, for clarification, when I'm saying an expression of the political culture, I'm referring to in the aggregate of the town, where are we going to emphasize the allocation of our real resources based upon how the Board of Education may budget, based upon how the town may budget?
And that's a question for them. Our responsibility is the $115 million that we bring in for the operating expenses of this municipality. Those decisions are made right here. The decisions for the nearly $200 million that the Board of Education gets is made down the street. And those, those, those questions are perfectly valid. But again, the services and the priorities of each Board of Education and each township committee and each county government is gonna be made by, by those respective entities.
Their individual political culture, yeah. Incidentally, Middletown Township website isn't run off of Amazon Web Services.
It is not.
What was it? I think britain.uk was down.
That's a bad website to have down. Did you visit britain.uk today, Brian? Oh, okay. I thought you said yes, so I figured you did. Oh, okay. All right. Any other member of the public wishing to make a public comment? See no other member of the public stepping forward, move the closed public portion real quick. Because I was halfway through my motion.
No, this is.
Go ahead.
I want to thank you, Mayor, and all of the people on the committee. I graduated from Modern Day High School, and I also vote every time, every time it comes up to increase the, the penny or whatever it was for open public space. And so I think it was a great decision that you made, especially for the children in the community to keep those ball fields. And I'm looking forward to seeing the park, even though I'm sad to see the building go. I'll be very happy to see the new park. So thank you.
Thank you so much. And by the way, the Monmouth County opens, Monmouth County does have a referendum on their ballot this year for open space. And to give them the, the credit that they deserve, two of those acquisitions that we made this year, including Modern Day, $8.8 million coming from the county, and then Linkoff Presbyterian Church, 3.2, yeah, 3.2 million coming from the county. So both of those acquisitions being funded at 75% by Monmouth County to be able to support Middletown, and that's why voting for open space is so critical. All right. Any other member of the public? Seeing no member of the public stepping forward, move the closed public portion and adjourn.
Second.
Committeeman Clark.
Yes.
Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to.
Have a good night, everybody. Thank you all so much.